...that I'd like to get approved, the first being if we could move the introduction of the New Canaan High School Assistant Principal above the World Languages update, just so we can get someone home at a decent hour. And then also, we are going to remove the Board of Ed Policy 4000 Second Read. We need a little more time to go through that packet. It's quite voluminous and we want to get more opportunity for the Board to comment. So if I could get a motion to amend tonight's agenda. Katrina, second. Sheri, all those in favor? It's unanimous. And then could I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Sheri, Hazel, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to comments from the public. And to ensure the public's right to be heard, the Board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Do I have anyone wishing to address the Board this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to reports and recognition and the introduction of the Assistant New Canaan High School Principal, Kristy Carrero. Dr. Lettsie.
Yes. Thank you. It is my great pleasure to introduce the Board tonight to Kristy Carrero, our new Assistant Principal at the high school. Kristy began with us July 1st. She's been working at the high school ever since, as you know, with the vacancy of David Gussich going to Saks. We conducted an extensive search. We advertised in all of the ways that we typically do. Had a committee of 17 folks who interviewed Kristy and a few other people. Kristy absolutely stood above the rest due to her great experience at Bryan McMahon High School in Norwalk where she was a math teacher. She was also an Assistant Principal for a couple of years. She oversaw amongst other departments, the math department. I actually have a list because it's a long list. The math department, she ELL, PE and health. She was the testing coordinator. She was involved with school climate. But I think for me, at least most impressively, she was really instrumental at Bryan McMahon in helping them bring in the IB program at the high school. And while here in New Canaan High, we're not necessarily pursuing the IB program, what I learned about Kristy through that process was her collaborative style, her change management and leadership approach is very effective and very cooperative and really very focused on students and families and staff and the entire community. So very impressive stuff. We are thrilled to have Kristy joining us here at the high school. She has big shoes to fill and I think she's already well on her way to doing that with us here. Welcome, Kristy.
Thank you, Dr. Lettsie, for those very kind words. And thank you to the entire New Canaan community for the warm inviting welcome I've experienced these past couple of weeks. I'm extremely humbled and proud to be named Assistant Principal of New Canaan High School. I am eager to begin working with all of you, as well as the entire school community, in supporting the students and families of New Canaan. I am thrilled to be part of this strong and successful school district and enthusiastic about contributing to its great legacy. So thank you all for this wonderful opportunity and I look forward to a really successful school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carrero. We're excited to have you onboard and look forward to working with you in the next year. Okay. All right. Moving on to the World Language Update with Lizette D'Amico.
It is. So Lizette is back this evening to give us an update on the district goals that will be closing out tonight and hopefully approving our new district goals for the 18-19 school year. But Lizette needed to finalize the school year in order for her to come back and to report progress towards those district goals. So I introduce Mrs. Lizette D'Amico, who will be our World Language Coordinator, as well as our ELL Coordinator for the district, K-12.
Well, thank you for having me. I was actually looking at this this morning and I just realized it's actually my 10th year here this year. And I'm just really grateful as I look around sort of our area and what's been happening with World Language. It's not been consistent in the areas around us. And you know, sort of you'll see people pick up a FLESS program, but other people start to lose enrollment. And you know, we've been consistent. And you know, I just, I appreciate it because I know it comes from you. I mean, you're the ones who hired me to do this and I really appreciate all the support. So without you, you know, we wouldn't even be here. So thank you. This is, as you know, the Board Goals from last year. And I just wanted to just talk to you a little bit about how we've done on meeting these goals. Oh, and I'm sorry, and my ELL goal as well. So the first goal was around how many of our students are taking a World Language. And this year, as you see, 81% of our students at New Canaan High School are taking a World Language. Then the second part of that goal was to talk about what are the languages that students are taking in going into sixth grade. If you remember, a few years ago, I did do a survey of the fifth graders and I was sort of trying to get into their heads and see why they were picking the languages that they pick. Because there seemed to be a lot of kids that were opting out of Spanish after being in the kindergarten through fifth grade program. And you know, it's hard. So for them, it's the first time they have a choice. And so when they said, "I wanted to try something else," in their lifetime, they've never been given a choice. And so it's hard to argue with that and I get that. But if you see, there seems to be a slight change into this year. So even last year, 37% of the students going into sixth grade chose Latin. But this year, 31% of them are choosing Spanish. So I think we're starting to see this trend back into Spanish, which would be nice. I think the kids are starting to understand a little bit more about what they'll be able to do with the language, instead of just simply thinking, "Oh, I'll just try this for now and then switch back." I am appreciative that we offer as many choices though, because Spanish isn't for everyone and a spoken language isn't for everyone. And I do think that we're able to offer a choice to every single child. So just a quick breakdown of the languages that are chosen. The second goal was around the Apple Test that we administer at the end of eighth grade and at the high school. I did alter the goal just a little bit in my reporting because in the summer last year, the state gave us a new sort of legislation and a new goal. And it was something called the Seal of Bilinguality. And I think I shared it with you last year. And it was an opportunity for students to gain this, literally a seal, on their diploma and their transcript that somehow set them apart from other kids. And so instead of sort of just coming back and telling you how many kids scored what, we thought, "Well, why not just capture for you how many kids actually met the requirements to have the seal on their transcript?" The only difference is that we were just administering the speaking and the writing part of the Apple Test. And for the seal, you have to take all four sections of the Apple Test. So it included now the reading and the listening as well. And so it made the test a little more rigorous for kids. Instead of just showing proficiency in two, they had to show proficiency in all four in order to meet the seal. So we gave it to every Level Four and Five student to give them an opportunity to put that on their transcript as they were either applying for college or entering into college. And as you see, 266 kids met the benchmark. And that's 82% of the students in the program. What the seal is, is like I was saying, it's something to set you apart. But what more importantly, it's less about what do you know about language and it's about using language. Okay? So we're really trying to have students be honored for the fact that they can actually use a second language to communicate with others. On the Seal of Bilinguality website, you see this map. And the dark color is all of the states that have already accepted or are already participating in the Seal of Bilinguality. In some of these states who have been doing it for years, those state colleges are giving you credit for having the seal on your transcript. So even in addition to sort of having taken a language, if you maybe speak a language at home and you take this test and you're meeting the Seal of Bilinguality with that, they're accepting that seal as sort of proof that you speak a language and then they're giving you credit for it. The white states haven't done anything with that. The sort of tanish states are starting to look into it. And then I think it's green on yours. They're in legislation. They're in the process of actually writing legislation for this new seal. So our seal is actually a seal. We actually talked endlessly about this. It's actually a sticker. And so we went ahead and we got all the kids who met that, an actual sticker for their diploma, because we really wanted them to showcase that and to realize that they really are different than other kids that may be, like I said, applying for colleges. And then in addition, we put that on their transcript. And on their transcript, we actually wrote like Seal of Bilinguality Russian or Seal of Bilinguality Spanish. And some of the kids actually have two of them. If they maybe speak a language at home and then are studying a language, we are able to give them the two different seals on their transcript, but just one sticker on their So the next goal was around how the eighth graders did on the same assessment. So you know, many, many years ago, when we first started talking about assessing the eighth graders, we were really talking about sort of benchmarking where they're heading off into the high school and then monitoring how well we did in the high school. And now that we have the seal, we really want to send the kids off well-prepared because they need to hit an intermediate high in order to achieve the seal. So we wanted to send them to the high school with an intermediate low. And I am super proud of the staff and because as you see, 90% of the students met already intermediate low, leaving the Spanish classes at Saks. And now they just will have to move through that intermediate stages in order to meet the seal. And then 92% of them met it in the writing benchmark. And those are the scores now for French. 85% speaking and 95% for them in writing. The goal in Mandarin is a little lower because it is considered a Level Four language and it is significantly harder to achieve those scores. And so we set a goal for them for N4. If you guys have met Haoming, she's super humble and although I tell her 96% of those kids, I mean, you should be so proud. And all she says to me is, "Yes, but it's not 100." So she's going to work on that and we're going to get back to you on that. But they did really well on this assessment. I wanted to actually show you. So I talk about this test all the time and I'm not sure, and I'm sure over the years I've sent you a link and I don't expect everyone to only think about me, although I'm sure you do. But I thought, I just wanted to show you what it's like. Because one of the years I came in and I talked to you a little bit about helping the kids practice for the test. And the reason that you have to practice for the test is not just because it's on the computer, but because it's a little different. You're sort of talking to this woman and you're going to see. And you're supposed to pretend you're actually engaged with her, but you're not, right? And so for a while, you have to sort of, I just want you to see why you have to practice because it's a little interesting, I think is the word I want. Okay, so I'm here in my room. Where are you? So it pauses and then you're talking. And as you're talking, she's going like that. Okay. So the problem is, she's going like that even if you're not talking. So some of the kids are like, "Well, I haven't started yet." And she's laughing. "What is going on?" And I'm like, "And it's recording everything you're saying, so stop talking." So anyway, we've sort of had to practice that, but it's a little, a little annoying. Okay? So when I say we're practicing for it, I want you to think that I'm just giving them test-taking and test-taking. It's that.
Spencer might have to come back out. Spencer.
Did you hit the arrow key on the keyboard? No, on the keyboard.
I'm going to miss him. We're all worried. It's Spencer's last meeting.
Okay. So we practiced with this task, like I said, you know, so you're sort of practicing with this woman. And again, we really tried to get them to get into it. And I just want you to, and by the way, I did get approval from her mom and from her to let you see this. But I just want you to see, some of them get really into talking to her. Just watch. You're not going to be able to necessarily understand her, but just watch her. She's talking, talking to this woman. And I was standing right next to her and for every question, she was like this. I'm like, "She can't see you." She's like, "Ah, da." And I was like, "Okay." So again, they're doing a great job. So on to my L goals. So there's a process when students enter into the school system. They register online. And when they register, they answer three home language questions. Recently, the state changed the process. In the past, if you answered, there's three questions. If you answered two of them with a language other than English, then I was alerted and I had to come out and assess your child. Now, if you answer one question with a language other than English, I have to come out and assess your child. So it's just become a little bit more difficult for us. So these are the three questions that they answer. And so I come in, I assess you. There's two different assessments depending on whether or not you're in kindergarten. Sometimes it'll say the child speaks English, but the parent speaks a different language. And then the language spoken at home may or may not be a different language. But then sometimes you're talking to the child and they don't actually even speak the other language. So that sort of ends there because they're like, "Oh, I don't really speak that." And you're like, "Okay." But still, you know, it requires that we sort of meet them and we sometimes meet with the families. And then again, we give them the assessment. If they're into the L program, then we work with them. And then again, we have to give them the Lost Links, which used to be in the spring and now is in January. So just to give you an idea of how much New Canaan has changed, I think, in the last 10 years. Last year, 114 families answered those questions with at least one language other than English. And you know, a lot of people say to me, "Oh, so mostly Spanish. You know, I speak Spanish, so that would be easy." And so, no. We, you know, these are just some of the languages that came into our system. As of this year, we're still getting registrations in. I had as of July 12, 48. I was meeting with Jill today and somebody registered today into the high school from, what did I tell you? Ukraine? Yeah. Something that I don't speak. So you know, it just sort of goes to show you how, I just think, how diverse we've become, which is so great and just, I guess, ensuring that I have a job is just the way I see it This year, because it seems like everything's going online, the new Lost Links, which is the EL test, went online as well. And so for the older kids, it's really not a big deal. It's similar to the Spanish test I just gave you. It's the headphones and you're talking into the headphones and that's fine. So for kindergarten, not so much. I mean, we, the stories I could tell you and the pictures I kept sending Jill and Brian while I was testing, I mean, they don't even want to put the headphones on or they're putting the headphones on and then they take them off right away. And you're like, "No, you have to talk into the headphones." Like it just, you know, and then type something and the kids are trying to touch the screen and the keys are actually here. I mean, it was lots of things that we... So this is just an idea, just to show you. So the very first time we put the headphones on this little boy and he has to say his name and then hear himself. That's it. Okay. Ready? One more time. Okay, so testing takes a little longer when that's what we do every single time. And then it's like, "Again." And I'm like, "Oh my God, we're still on question one. So if we could just move a little faster." So just again. Again, if you don't know what I'm doing during the day, Jill, just, the kind of stuff I do. So to give you an idea of how I think we did really well this year, even though we were online and I was really nervous, in 14-15, we had 38 kids in the district. 12 exited. 15, 16, 48, 11 exited. 50 students, 23. And this year, we had 59 students and 23 exited. I did put that difference there. The state changed the test. Remember, I just told you earlier, into January. And we had seven students move into the district after the testing, which meant they were tested in another district. And so I just gave you the numbers. Of the 52 students that we serviced and we assessed, 23 of them exited. So I am really happy with that. Just in case, our EL program is, the state does not tell you how to service EL students. So our sort of approach has been an administrator with a case manager and instructional support staff. It really seems to be working for us because the support staff were able to sort of move around depending on when students enter and as they progress in their English, we can sort of, again, sort of change their schedules just to meet student need. I wanted to truly thank you again because I know that you really fought hard for me and I do appreciate the case manager. I don't know honestly how I would have survived definitely this online testing. I'm not sure I saw her for two months because I assessed the upper schools and she sat there, truly sat there with these little kids. And not just that, I mean, the number of parent meetings she goes to and translates and we take turns and really, it's been huge and I truly, truly appreciate it, more than you'll know. And you know, I don't even know. I can't even tell you what we're going to do into the future. I feel like, you know, the future is whatever we make of it. I did notice in sort of the Board Goals, we're thinking about what are we going to do with the kids that are coming in from Saks taking Spanish. So we had a high number of them move from Saks into Level Three. So we have nothing for them at Level Six. So I'm excited to think about that and work with the students with that. The few students that we did survey this year did talk to us about learning something in Spanish, right? So I don't want to learn about Spanish anymore. I want to study something in Spanish. And I think that's exciting. And so we'll work on that this year and come back to you with that. And so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lizette. And it's great to hear that the case manager is working out so well. And you know, I think it's important for people to understand, you know, and you're just one place where this is happening. I mean, it's a little discouraging to see more mandates where you, you know, had to, you know, bring these kids in if they entered, you know, answered one question about a second language as opposed to two. And you know, that just increases your workload and your case manager's workload. And you know, I think people need to understand that that's happening and it, you know, we deal with it because you guys are professionals and you are looking out for these kids and you want to make sure that they get the support that they need. But I think people need to also understand that, you know, it's being done without even more resources than what you've already got. So thank you again for your commitment to these kids because it's a lot of work and it's encouraging to see the results, so. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Lizette? Sheri?
Sure. I just have one question, one comment. First of all, I'm so glad that you got to come present to us for your 10th anniversary. I'm sure a big treat for you too. So I just have a question on the CT Seal of Bilinguality. So is that, I just want to clarify, is that a state or a national seal? Because my understanding, just now that I kind of have kids at the college, looking at the college, that the colleges do like to see like national language seals.
Right. So it's a national movement and so you're going, there's a seal of bilinguality. And then what each state has to do is define how you're going to achieve it. And so the state of Connecticut outlined a certain number of assessments that we could use to demonstrate a student's language proficiency. And so I think that that's why it's called a Connecticut seal, because Connecticut defined the, like the Apple Test was one of the tests that you could use. And so, but it's part of the bigger seal.
Right. Okay. Okay, that makes sense. And then my other question is, I believe that there was some discussion about finding World Language internships. Or if not, like, I was just curious if there's an update on that because I know, you know, it's a big job to place out all of those students and I think that we're still working on that process of making sure that we've got enough quality internships. But I certainly know that there's a number of businesses that would, could employ a student with a, you know, high proficiency in a second language and/or, I mean, there's refugee populations in Bridgeport. There's a lot of actually translation need in the Fairfield County area. And I'm just wondering if we've been able to progress that because I think it's a golden opportunity to get our students hands-on world language experience.
I totally agree with you. I think we struggle to find sort of the perfect match. I think it's not that our kids can't do it. I think they're scared, right? And so I think placed in a situation where, "I need you to go and translate that for, you know, I need you to translate for this parent, I need you to translate for this person." Their first reaction is, "I'm not sure I can do that." And so I, so part of that, you know, in talking to Bill, it's been around, okay, what can we do in the classroom where we're putting them in a safe situation to do just that? To show them you can do that. So don't, like, that can't be the first time you do it. Does that make sense? So the first time you go to translate can't be the day of your internship. We've got to do that before. And so that's sort of the good part about ESL. So we have started to do where some of the kids are helping some of our students. Like I had a couple of the AP Spanish students helping some of the EL students with math. And in that is when they, that's the hard part, right? It's like, it's not part of a chapter. I have to sort of know how to explain these, these words. And then you see the kids coming out like, "Oh, I did that. That was pretty cool. I could do that again." And so it's again, just sort of putting them in that situation. But they were hesitant, the kids were hesitant to sign up for anything like that right off the bat.
Okay. I would just encourage us to continue to explore that.
Oh, I completely agree.
And, you know, encourage our students because, you know, it's, of course, we want them to be proficient, but ultimately, we want them to be able to use the language.
That's the whole goal. So one of the things actually, I don't know if I'm going off, but I'm going to go off anyway. So every year, we do in the high school, something called a Hispanic panel. And so we bring Hispanic professionals to come and talk to the kids in Spanish about the importance of being bilingual. And next year, we're actually going to change it a little and we're actually going to try and seek out parents or people in the community who actually are English dominant and are using another language. Because we want to showcase that. We want to showcase to them, "Do you see how that parent wasn't perfect? You probably heard errors, but that's okay." Like they made themselves understood and like showcasing that. Because I think when they see the Hispanics, that doesn't, they don't feel like, "I speak that well, so I must not be able to do that." So instead, sort of trying to change it. We had one parent, that's sort of where the idea came up. This one parent has worked overseas and he was speaking to the kids in Spanish and they were, you know, "Oh my God, I understand him." And you know, "I caught that mistake and it's okay. It's okay." And because he made himself understood. So yes, to your point, we're working on that.
Other questions? Penny?
Just you've done such a fabulous job with this program and it's wonderful to see languages evolve, K through 12. So thank you very much for all your energy and enthusiasm. I was wondering, in terms of our goals, we have really good goals for eighth grade students performing low, intermediate on the speaking portion. Do we have any goals for Latin students? For eighth grade or for high school?
Yes. So their goal is now also low, intermediate. There's an ALIRA test. So Apple has a Latin version and it's called ALIRA.
So should we add that to our goals here that we're approving tonight?
I think it...
I just didn't see ALIRA mentioned.
Oh, that I don't know.
It's on the speaking portion of the ACT full. They're both ACT full.
They're both made by ACT full. But ALIRA is a reading test. Because you don't speak the Latin.
Right.
I see your point.
I didn't know, should we change that language a little bit or if you want to take a look at it?
We could. I mean, that's what we're doing, so it should reflect, you know, because you're right, nobody's left out.
Right. I just want to.
You know, we can just add or the writing portion of the ALIRA.
And then I didn't know, since we had... And then I didn't know, since we had the biliteracy, doesn't apply to Latin, right?
It does. If you reach the intermediate high in ALIRA, it does give you the seal of biliteracy in Latin.
All right, terrific. Thank you.
Maria?
I know Spanish you can take for college credit and Latin, or-
Yes.
Any other languages?
Next year, French and Spanish.
Okay. I think that actually my kids took the AP exam for Latin and it's so difficult, so we're kinda looking forward to the college credit.
Yes.
I think that'll be better.
Yes.
Because I think you need a five or something, it's a little out of reach. Thank you.
Yep.
And thank you for everything you do. We love your department.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Katrina?
Thank you, Lizette. I believe the last time you presented, you mentioned that there was a trend towards kids leaving Saks going back to Spanish from other languages. Is that still a trend?
Yes.
And is it, is it the same percentage of kids or?
So I don't have the actual percentages. I shouldn't say it's a trend. I think that the teachers now at Saks are working harder and in combination with the teachers at the high school to keep kids in their language, which I think is what you're seeing as they're choosing their language. What we're trying to trickle down through parents and, you know, and through kids is this idea that it's important to stick with something. So if you're going to stick with Latin, that's great and that's fine if you're gonna switch to Latin, but we really want you to stick with it when you get to the high school. Please don't pick something to then switch again. Really, like, think things through and really be cautious and careful. My, my two numbers at French and Latin are actually pretty solid, which are telling me that the kids are starting to stay. You know, Mandarin is the one that you sort of get the attrition and it's just, it's just really hard. And they really stick with it and then I think what you'll see is the kids who stick with it just do really well, right? And so we had a solid number at five and we have enough kids to run another five next year, which is phenomenal. And so you sort of have that cohort, but I think a lot of them do switch over. Those are the kids that you're seeing switch over into Spanish now.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have one, two quick things. You know, first, Lizette, I wanna commend you on the model that you've developed for EL.
Yeah, thanks.
We get calls downtown from time to time at, you know, my office asking how are we doing it, what does it look like? And I know that other districts are reaching out to you as well to try to learn sort of how we're meeting the needs of students, so I just wanted to commend you on that.
Thank you.
Also, the idea of learning a subject in Spanish as a level six, it just reminded me, I think it was two years ago when we were putting together the goals. Penny, I think you mentioned something about immersion and teaching a class in another language, things like that. So that's exciting to think that that could be, and the students are asking for it.
Yes.
So it'd be interesting to find somebody who's dual certified or something else who could perhaps, you know, provide that. And just last question was the, the levels for the seal of biliteracy. Am I remembering correctly that we had at first targeted intermediate, mid as the level of proficiency for our students and then the, with the seal, it's actually intermediate high? So this has actually raised the level of expectation for students when taking that test?
Yes, and the seal added those two other tests, so we were really just focused on speaking and writing, not, not that you don't do the rest, but that's really what we were focused on. The seal requires that you give the reading and the listening as well and that they all reach the same high levels. And so, yes, we increased the rigor.
From the intermediate to the intermediate.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Lizette.
Yeah, absolutely.
It was great to see. All right. So moving on to action items, we have in front of us the canine search policy, which you should have received in your Friday packet. We'll be able to discuss it, but if I could get, just to bring it onto the table, a motion to approve as a first read, the use of dogs to search school property, the Cabe Model Policy 5145-122. If I could get a motion. Hazel, second. Sheri.
Okay, so let's open it up to discussion and Dr. Lutz.
Great, thank you. As I believe the board is aware, this has been a topic of conversation for us over the last year or so and in the last two months, Leon, Chief Ferlicowski and I have had some conversations about this as well. Bringing it to the board tonight for a first read in the hope that we can review it and I'll touch on some of the parts that are in here for consideration for approval in the August meeting so that it's in place for the start of the school year. What we did in putting this together, we did contact Cabe and asked them to send a model policy, but also contacted several other districts that include Greenwich, Monroe, Shelton, Brookfield and a couple of others and looked at samples of their policies as well. They generally do pull from the Cabe Model Policy and use that with some slight modification as I'm proposing we do here. And the idea is that the superintendent would be empowered to authorize a search of the schools, any one of the schools, with the police and with the, you know, police dogs. The idea is that the, it would be the administration that would initiate the search, they could come on site to do that. That school property could be searched, but that individuals could not be searched. And that's consistent across the board when we look at these policies. That the notification of the policies would be through the student handbooks, that the dog's handler would be in charge of the dog while on site, that the, if a dog does alert on a student's possessions, that then the student would be notified and would be present for any additional search. And if that were to occur, then parents would be notified as well. And really, the policy from the Board of Ed really speaks to a belief in the importance of having substance-free schools across the board and that's really what drives this. I've been in schools that have had searches before. It is, it can be difficult and complex to put in place, but certainly can be worthwhile as well. So with this authorization, we would look to sporadically hold such searches, some maybe when school's in session, maybe when it's not. As you know, we have done some searches when school's not in session, but this authorizes us, the administration, to go ahead and do it when school is. When we do that, we, the students do go into a lockdown drill, so you have students in their classrooms who go into lockdown for the duration of the drill because you do wanna keep students and the dogs separate during the search. But it is something that I think is a good idea. I think that the, the policy would empower us to make the decision to do this if and when we felt it's important. I did, I shared the policy with the chief and he and I have spoken about it and we agree that this, the model policy, which again uses similar language to that from Brookfield, from Wilton, some other districts, that it would give us the ability to effectively use the, the police canine for these types of searches in our schools.
All right, thank you. Are there questions? Tom?
I just had one that came to mind as I was reading policy here. I'm wondering if there's any procedure, it doesn't necessarily have to be policy, of reporting the number of searches and the number of alerts and the number of false alerts in a given school year, just to kind of get a sense of the effectiveness of the program and to keep the board aware of what's going on. Do you know of any districts doing anything like that?
I haven't seen anything formally like that, but I think it's a very good idea and I think it's something that we could certainly put in practice, that we, because we do keep a safety, a log of our safety drills, of our fire drills, lockdown, other safety drills that we run, so in the similar, in the same log, we could include these data that would then help us in generating that complete report around school safety and security. It's a good idea.
Other question? Sheri?
So I just wanna clarify that this policy, under this policy, the administration invites and directs the local enforcement to do the search.
Yes.
It cannot happen in reverse, so.
Yes.
Like the, okay.
Yeah, and that's common across all of the policies that we looked at, that certainly we have a great relationship with the New Canaan Police Department and we continue that, but any of the searches would be initiated by the school administration, reaching out to the police and working, and inviting them in and scheduling that time.
Correct.
And the policy does speak to the principal or designee being present throughout the duration of the search as well.
Penny?
So is it anticipated that this would just occur at the high school? Because it looks like it covers all school property.
This covers all school property. At this point, we would anticipate that it would be at the high school, but in putting the policy forward, we felt that we might, we should leave it open to all property since it, and it would be, again, directed by the superintendent.
So I, so I guess if it, if it could cover schools other than the high school, then I'm a little bit worried about item seven where it talks about seeking the student's consent. Because that doesn't seem, I think, you know, that might be appropriate at a high school level, there might be questions about that at a high school level, but I'm not certain, you know, you might want parental notification if you're doing it at a level lower than a high school. I just, doesn't seem like we could actually get a real consent from a elementary student.
Number eight is the, students' parents should be notified by the school administration.
But that's after the fact. That's after the fact, yeah.
We could add language in there if the student is below a certain age, if that's, if that's what you think.
I've just, I just wasn't sure. I had thought of this policy only with respect to a high school, but since it applies beyond the high school, I don't wanna suggest what the answer would be, I would just sort of wanna-
We could think about that.
Think about what would be the appropriate way to handle that.
Okay.
And just because I was gonna ask about that, number seven as well. So I just wanna understand if, if a search is, you know, they wanna conduct a search and a, and a student says no, what happens?
I think it's situational.
Because I, it just, I don't understand, given the language, it's asking for consent and if a student says no, you can't, then what happens?
Well, what we've done in the past is if we suspect a student, I'll give an example to be concrete, if we were to suspect a student of drinking alcohol and we give the student the opportunity to take a breathalyzer in order to show that they have not been drinking alcohol. If they refuse to take the breathalyzer, then we have to take steps in the assumption that they have been drinking alcohol. So there's, there's the opportunity for them to consent to the search in order to show that there's, you have nothing there. But in the, in a school environment, right, the difference is the, the police have certain rights and the school administration has certain rights. It's probable cause for the police, it's probable suspicion for the school administrators. So the administration at that point could, if there was probable suspicion, even if the student didn't consent, to search, say, of the backpack, for instance, the school administration can still search the backpack. The police could not search the backpack. So there's a difference in the standard because of probable suspicion versus probable cause. This policy is specific to the police and the canine searches, but if it was, if the answer was no, then it would, could go over to a search, our search policy, which is different, which speaks of probable suspicion.
So if, if I understand you clearly, if a, if a high school student were to say, no, you may not search my backpack and you searched it, or someone in the schools, it wouldn't necessarily, would we be required then to send it to the police because, or, I mean, I'm guessing there's a-
If we found something in there that rose a level of criminal, then we would.
Okay.
Right? So it's, the, the difference is that the expectation and the rights around who can do the search. So if the, if the canine in this policy were to alert on a backpack and the police asked to search the backpack, the child could say no to that under the, under the law, under the policy, but then we would ask to search the backpack and the child couldn't say no because we have the school's safety that we have to look out for as well in a different standard to that. If we then did that search of the backpack and found something that was illegal, criminal, then we would turn it over to the police as well and they'd be involved. So it's tricky, I can get more detail from the, from an attorney if that's, if that's helpful for you, but generally, that's how, how it works.
Yeah.
You know, if you've been a high school principal, you have to, you have to distinguish between these things, but it is that, the idea around the probable cause versus probable suspicion. It's a different standard for the search.
I would, I would agree with Penny's assessment, we might wanna get some more legal opinion on it just because of that, that particular item is a little problematic given the consent and the age of kids, so. Any other questions?
Well, I guess I just, like I said, like to make certain we're protecting, even for the high school students, that we're protecting their privacy rights appropriately. No, I don't know how accurate the canine searches are, so.
Right. We have to be careful.
Yeah.
You do. And I've, yeah, I've been in schools that have used them before and sometimes they've alerted accurately and sometimes they've alerted inaccurately. And so you do have to, it's innocent until the evidence is found if it's going to be there. So you have to be careful with it. It's not, it's not a hundred percent accurate, in my experience.
All right, well, you'll report back.
I'll be glad to.
That's why we have a first read and a second read.
Exactly right.
Maria?
I have a couple of questions, but first, so can, are the searches based on a reason or they're, they can just be random?
They can just be random.
Okay.
This policy permits for us to randomly do it without notification to the parents.
And when it says parking areas, so could that mean, like Penny said, I don't know how accurate they are, could it mean a car? Like, so they could go up to the car and then you would have to let the students know and?
They could.
Yeah.
And it's funny that it was cars, in my experience, that were at least accurate, where a dog had alerted on two different cars and one car had transported chickens in it the day before from the scene. And the other car had hummus and triscuits on the hood the day before because of a promposal thing and something else. And there's nothing else in either of the cars, so it, it can be difficult, but it does include cars and parking lots in those places.
And my last point is, I noticed the line that was taken out on line two, or point to, about an informational meeting for parents. I think it's too passive to just put it in the handbook. I think at the beginning especially, you need to have informational sessions, whether they're part of the back-to-school night, something has to be more informational and I like how it says to both parents and children. Because I think that could be a deterrent as well. And if the goal is to keep things off the property.
The challenge is the language assumes that it's going to be annual, right? So we put it in policy-
Right, but I almost feel like it should be annual because you-
That would be an annual meeting for that purpose, that could be difficult to, to schedule. I think that we can figure out the best way of communication with it, because I agree, it is a deterrent as much as anything else.
The kickoff maybe, or welcome back, whatever, back-to-school night.
And build it into, right, back-to-school night, something, but to, to have it here as a meeting in and of itself, an information meal for that purpose, I think would be difficult to, to do annually. So I always, I wanna be always careful about being too prescriptive in a policy like that, but certainly we wanna think about the best way to communicate it.
Yeah. Maybe, maybe it doesn't have to be in a meeting setting, maybe it's an email, you know?
It'll be-
I, because I agree with you, it's, you know, maybe the first year, it's, it's important to, you know, make people aware of a change in policy and this is a big change. You know, we can talk about it and people can weigh in, but maybe from, from here on out, after a year or so, it's, it's just part of an email that goes out.
Part of what we do.
That might be it, yeah. Maybe that's easier.
Well, it's probably easy too, to just put a checkbox, I consent, parent and student, you know, like a Google Doc or something that, so you know they actually read it, because you get so many emails.
That's a big assumption, with a checkbox.
Yeah, we'll think about the best way to communicate it.
Constant contact, then you know if they opened it.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. And we will have the second read. Are we gonna bring that in the twentieth?
Yep, the plans are bringing it on the twentieth and in the meantime, I'll get some information about seven and eight.
Yeah.
Around student consent and what happens if they don't consent, et cetera.
Right. And if we have, if you have any other comments between now and the twentieth, you know, you can send them to Dr. Lutz and myself, that'd be great. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the second read of the 2018, 2019 District Goals and Objectives. So we have the district goals, we have, we have them on the table, so I don't need, do we have any other discussion on the district goals before I ask for a motion to approve?
We have the one slight adjustment that Penny mentioned earlier.
Can we?
Just to include in the-
Oh, right.
Writing portion of the ALIRA on Goal Seven C.
Seven, so why don't we make that clear to everybody? So on Goal Seven C-
Goal One, Objective Seven, C.
Yeah. The all eighth grade. Yep. The all eighth grade, students will perform at or above low intermediate on the speaking portion of the actful assessment, or on the ALIRA, is that where?
The writing portion of the.
The writing of, or the writing, or on the writing portion of the ALIRA. Okay. Okay.
I had one.
Okay, Penny?
Suggestion. I don't think it's in here, I apologize if I missed it. On, in terms of the good stewardship of district resources and sort of saving money with respect to.
Why don't you tell everybody where exactly you are?
So I think it's all in Goal five.
Okay.
And I was thinking that, I know we're doing the, people ask me a lot of times about the solar, and I know we're looking at solar in connection with the roofs. And so we actually have stated, you know, there's a sort of a mix of specific and general, and I was wondering if we could add a statement with respect to solar energy in connection with the roofs, just to state we would investigate and implement, if appropriate, solar when, in conjunction with replacing the roofs. So I think it would be, it looks like it's, would be under 4C.
Yeah, it's almost like a subset of 4C, if you want it to be more specific, because 4C kind of covers that, but.
Right. But we have, I mean, we just have a number.
Yeah, it's fine, if you want to, if people want to add it, it's just, but it is part of that.
You know, you could, because energy management is such a large issue, and with the natural gas, with solar, with other things that we're talking about, you could create a five. And you could write something along the lines of, let's see, managing, managing, let's see. It's identifying and implementing cost-effective approaches to energy management district-wide.
Doesn't that feel like?
That's sort of 4C is.
Well, I was going to put 4C and D together into a five A and B, is what I was thinking. Because that four is to work collaboratively with the town, identifying efficient and effective cost-saving opportunities. And they could, it could still fit under that.
Right, it could be a five.
But when we're thinking of solar on the buildings, it may, it's.
And I don't know if it's going to make sense. I just wanted to state sort of publicly that we were studying.
It could be its own five, I guess. And it could be about identifying cost-effective, sustainable approaches, but we did that above.
I kind of feel like, as I read it again, because we, we were talking about it a little bit, and obviously, all four looking at these things, I, I tend to like to make these goals broad enough, because if something new happens in the year where something, we completely shift gears, we still want to look at energy efficient, energy efficiency opportunities. But if, you know, all of a sudden, the town decides they want to look at, you know, I mean, natural gas came in at the last minute, and we just, you know, you know, but if, if some new thing comes in and they want to shift gears, or we want to shift gears, I think the energy efficiency language addresses all of that. And, and, but, I mean, if people are very, want to be very specific, I'm willing to, to look at it again, but I also like to make these things a little bit more flexible.
You know, Joanne, I would defer to you. I mean, it's your department that's doing it. I still, I don't want to handcuff you. I just wanted to really, I know you've told at public meetings, you've stated that we're looking at it with respect to roofs. I didn't think there was a lot of appetite for doing it on parking lots or anything like that at this point. So I thought, and some, you know, we, we specifically state what goal, you know, what, what curriculums we're redoing. So I don't know. What do you think?
I personally think that the language as it stands does give us an appropriate level of flexibility to introduce different types of energy conservation, which we've done over the last few years. So I don't think that we're limited by the language we currently have in the goal.
No, I don't think we are limited. I was just wondering.
You know, we look at a lot of different things in terms of energy conservation.
How about if it's something quite simple, as you just, you could almost put in parentheses, after, continue working to evaluate and implement opportunities for energy efficiency, you could put in parentheses, you know, either solar, kind of natural gas, et cetera. And just to, because I think what I'm hearing from you is you want to, want people to know that we're looking at this.
Yeah. I just want people to know that we're.
It's a priority for us, and it has been, and we continue to keep it there. So that just keeps.
Okay.
Keeps it in, in front of us, clearly, that we are, this is one of these are the things that we're looking at, some of the things, but doesn't preclude us from doing anything else. So can it be something that's simple to just sort of signal that, yeah, this is one of the things that we're looking at? So it would be.
You could put, like, yeah, sure.
Just put in parentheses.
I mean, I don't know where it is with respect to natural gas or fuel. I don't know.
I think of natural gas, such as the science labs, the kitchens, other things that we're continuing to look at, and there may be ways to expand the use of that in different areas of the building that we haven't yet explored. So we're continuing to do that work. There's the idea of the microgrid, the idea of the fuel cells. I mean, there are lots of pieces that go with this, and, and to your point, we don't want to limit it by trying to list everything, but we want people to know that this, this is quite a bit going on here. And so I think this is a way to do that.
Okay.
Right. So without holding, you know, without tying anybody's hands.
Right. And just give some examples of what we're talking about. And solar would be one, natural gas is another. And we just keep working in the way that we're working.
Great.
If that works, we'll work.
Okay. Any other additions or comments before we vote? So the length, because this is the second read, and we're voting, so, so we're going to put I.e. solar and natural gas.
Comma, natural gas, comma, et cetera.
Comma, et cetera. Okay. Just so we have the exact language.
Yep.
All right. So, so we'll need to make those motions to add those into the goals before we do the second read.
I think you'd approve as a nominee.
Okay. All right.
And do you want to add in there, building management systems? Because I know that's been one of the huge things we've done. I don't know if we're doing anything more on that.
In that same parentheses?
Yeah, I don't know. It's all, it'll all just be EGs.
Okay.
But.
I mean, we do, we put lighting systems.
So building management systems?
Different systems on all the time, so it's fine to do that.
All right. So solar, comma, natural gas, comma, building management systems, comma, et cetera. All right. Any other additions or, Maria?
Under the good stewardship of district resources, we have worked collaboratively with the town to identify cost-savings opportunities. Can we add something where we do this internally in the district regarding, like mandates? You know, what's a must-have because of the mandate, what's a want, you know, and what's a nice to have? I think as we go forward, and, you know, as some of us, maybe we'll have our taxes go up, you know, I think we need to really look at ways to find out, to what extent do we need to implement certain things? Can we scale back? Can we, you know, take something out that's not working anymore? So it's more of an internal, you know, identifying efficiencies internally. If it, if it means finding out, you know, keeping track of how much the mandates cost, that would be, you know, identifying the cost of state mandates. We talk about it, I think, every year, kind of, you know, we know there's state mandates, but what do they actually cost, you know?
That's a very, I mean, it's a noble goal, it's a very large exercise, and, and it's very, some of it's very easy to, to pinpoint the dollars. Some of it's would take, you know, an inordinate amount of staff time to sort of, you know, catalog and, and quantify what the actual dollars, because it's, it's, you know, it's not buying something or employing a, an individual staff member. It's a staff diverted to do X, Y, or Z for whatever mandate, instead of doing something else. And that's a, that's a very, it's a, it's a very large undertaking, and in an environment when we are constantly having to rein in costs, you're kind of adding a big administrative hurdle, I believe, in trying to, I mean, we can make a, a general statement, I think, but I think to catalog, it either won't be precise, which isn't a good exercise, or it will take an inordinate amount of staff time to get a precise number. I, I don't know. I think I would defer to you, Joanne.
So I agree with everything you just said, and I would just add that our chart of accounts is not codified to accumulate costs by mandate. So we can't go to an automated system and decide how much, you know, determine how much it costs for mandate A, B, or C. And as Deanna said, some of it is easy to do. Some mandates are easy to quantify, but there are, most of them, I would say a majority of them, are not that easy to quantify. So I don't know that we could even accomplish a goal like that, to be honest with you.
So, well, the ones that stand out are the expansion of health, the expansion, like the ruler and school climate. Like, how do we hone in on the extent that we're implementing those and the cost of those, and looking for ways to find efficiencies?
I guess my question is, typically, we have taken the state mandates, and we have looked at how we can use the state mandate to benefit the students of New Canaan. And we've turned it, and we've turned it actually into a very positive educational experience. You know, I think response to intervention is one that's benefited a score of students. So I don't know, I mean, if there's one particular mandate that we think is really bad, and the district doesn't like, and thinks it's costing an awful lot of money, then maybe we want to look at doing something like that, and then we could gin up a lobbying effort. But then across the board, trying to figure out what the mandates cost, if that's what you were suggesting, I, I don't think that would be productive, and I think it would take a huge amount of administrative time. So I would, I would not be inclined to want to do that.
Are there any other comments or thoughts on? You know, I think, I, I think the, the administration does a good job when we have, like, you know, some of the mandates that you're talking about, like ruler and things like that. We, through the budget process, we identify the costs, you know, what, what bringing in those programs was going to cost, you know, the Mark Brackett, the, you know, the other kind of costs. And, you know, as, as a board, when we go through the, that December, the workshop in December, we look at those programs and say, you know, are those of, is it a priority or not a priority? And, and the, the administration, you know, justifies why they have it in the budget, and if, if the board agrees, then we put it in there. And so. Hazel, did you have?
I was just going to say, we've also had.
You want to bring that closer so people can hear?
We've also had a number of state mandates, or ones that have been proposed or are happening. And we've tried to make the, our representatives aware of the impact they're going to have. And I think that we can't possibly follow all of the mandates that are, that come in in a year. Even if all of us devoted it the entire year to it, it would be difficult. But to, maybe there's some way to soften that, to say that if we become aware, we'll certainly make people aware that, or pass on that awareness to those people making the decisions. I mean, because absolutely, we would spend the whole year, it'd be a disappointing year at the end when we evaluated that we had looked at 65 mandates, and that was it.
I would just, I would just kind of go, go actually to Goal five, Objective four, B. And I think it, it really, I mean, it really does, I, address sort of our dealing with efficiencies. And it says, identify efficiencies and offsets in order to continue using district resources as effectively as possible while maintaining, enhancing student learning. So I, I feel like that sort of addresses, that word efficiently is sort of addressing, I think, what you're asking in a way that's trying to, you know, I mean, it's not specific to one program, and I understand, but I also believe that, that sort of what you're asking is, is, is not achievable.
Well, I, I guess, you know, the ruler is a good example of one, because that does take resources, it will take student time, it will take professional development time, and before that, it was connections. So what I'm thinking is, we need to look at what we've done and really evaluate it. What was the benefit? What was the outcome? Did we meet it? Can we scale that out? And, you know, just, those are the efficiencies I'm thinking. You know, these are, I mean, I have kids in the school, so they're sitting through these programs, and I'm not necessarily sure it is benefiting them. So if, if something's not benefiting our kids, are we evaluating them and scaling them out?
So I think that's, I mean, I would argue, and I'd like to defer to you, but I think that's the purpose of the presentations to the board on those programs. I think we, that's why we had a ruler presentation this year, and why we had those presentations. So it gives you an opportunity, and other board members who may have concerns about different programs, to sort of evaluate them, talk to the people who are going to be, who are rolling those programs out, and, and really getting a better handle on, you know, sort of the efficiencies of those programs, and then the effectiveness. So, I don't know. Sherry?
Yeah. No, and I would just agree with that, because I think also ruler, first of all, I'm, I'm getting confused, because we're talking about measuring the cost of mandates. Ruler is not a mandate. It's something that, because as part of our district goals, we all, as a board, agree that social emotional intelligence is one of our priorities, and then the administrative team and the experts in the schools have decided, concluded that that's one of the best tools to implement. You know, we as a board had a workshop specifically on social emotional intelligence and ruler, and agreed with that. So I, I do, I, I guess I'm agreeing with you, that I think it goes back to, like, let's really focus on the district goals and making sure that our priorities are reflected here, and not, I, I guess I'm confused as well, like throwing up a whole big.
No, I think I'll explain it. We'd never voted on the social, on the ruler, because we, well, we had SAPPLE in place. That's, to me, we sort of built a lot of that. So, and that was just one example of evaluating something that we have in place to find efficiencies. If we don't, you know, if it didn't work, if SAPPLE didn't work, I'm not really sure. But we didn't vote on ruler. So I, I thought in our information sessions, never conclude with a vote. So that's my fault, I guess, for not speaking up and saying, you know.
I don't think a board votes on, you know, every decision that, I mean, that is implemented at that level in the organization. I mean, I think that we had a lengthy workshop on the district's approach in social emotional intelligence, and we had ample time to review that model and the tool, and how it would be implemented, to ask questions to better understand. So I'm not sure what more.
Well, I think the policies do say we would vote, the board would accept or reject programs, but we don't vote on those kind of things, so that never came up. I didn't realize the presentation meant we were, it was just wholesale adoption. My point in asking for efficiencies is, I do believe the ruler came in as part of a mandate, the school climate mandate. So, you know, are we tracking the cost of these as they come in, even if it's by goal? You know, you know, I don't want to add work to the board, but or the administration.
Are there any other comments or Penny?
I would just say that, you know, from having sat on this board, what my impression is from the administration is that the number one concern that they have with respect to a mandate, where it actually ends up costing the district a lot, is the burden of proof in special ed cases, that we're one of the few states that puts the burden of proof on the school district to justify what they've done. And that we've actually, last year, we tried to propose legislation to change that. And that, that's. So if there are other mandates like that, that the district is finding, creating undue expense for us, I would expect that, as you brought that one forward, you would bring other unnecessary mandates forward, and we could address them sort of on an ad hoc basis, that we wouldn't need to undertake an extensive allocation, you know, that our charter accounts isn't set up to do.
That's similar to what I was thinking, as we're just listening to the board discuss a little bit, was about perhaps, you know, identifying problematic mandates that the district is giving, whether they're state or federal. And really, you know, we work in different ways to try to address those, but to bring the board into that conversation as well, such as the, again, the burden of proof, or maybe there's other things that either exist or could exist in the future. But if mandates come that are problematic, to, you know, bring those forward for discussion and/or to consider different ways of advocacy. You know, we have gotten involved. We've worked with some of our local representatives. You know, I've written emails, I've made phone calls and done things around. It's different type, different votes, different things going on in the legislature during the, the sessions. But to communicate that more to the board, for the, for your advocacy as well, could be a helpful step in this direction. The, you know, the specifics, the goals do drive the presentations, and they, they talk about, you know, the goals point us in towards the what, right? And then we work very hard to figure out the how. And often, it is evolutionary, right? It's one step, we learn from that, and then we look at what's the next step, what's the next step. And that's why the, some of the things in the, in the objectives have been here for a while, and we keep presenting on year after year, like Tepel's a good example, where we continue to refine that and refine that, and we'll, every other year, it seems to be, you know, present. you know, present that to the board, so that the board understands what we're doing, the community understands that, and we can get feedback as well, you know, from the board as we continue on that iterative process of trying to always make things better. The, we don't necessarily say, you know, we don't change course midstream, as we're learning these things, we continue to evolve. And that's, I think, where you go from sort of SAPL to where we are now with emotional intelligence across the district and the work that we're doing. We haven't said, "That's no good, we're going to do this instead." The SAPL, the work that we've been doing there, is, has been evolving, and is really the, the connections of what, you know, Dr. Bliss has been talking to us about for the last couple of years, about how, what we've learned from SAPL and through the indicators that we've created there are directly connected to the work that we're doing in emotional intelligence, and with the, the ruler approach through Yale and that, that group there. So, and we do try to do things that are, you know, we learn from what we're doing, so it becomes iterative, and we improve on it year after year as we're going. The, but again, back to the mandate question, I think that that is, it's something that we all, we do internally, you know, we're look, if there are issues with different mandates or things that are happening in Hartford, you know, we do get involved, so I think that's a way the, the board could get involved. We also do look at, we use a framework that I used to teach from UConn, it's called the High Leverage Policy Framework, that when there is a mandate that comes down, a policy change, something else, as you mentioned earlier, Penny, we really do look at it around, this is what it's asking us to do, what are we already doing? And is there a way we can implement this for the benefit of our students and our schools and our community? And if so, we look to leverage that, that policy change the best that we can, in the highest way that we can, for the benefit of everybody involved. And so that's where, you know, in part, it is difficult to break any of this out, because it doesn't, nothing happens in isolation, it's a complex system where everything's interconnected, and we're always looking at, you know, when something comes, what are we already doing that works towards this? Do we have to make some changes in order to meet whatever the expectations are? And if we make those changes, will it make things better for our students, for our community, for our teachers? And if the answer is yes, 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 then we go in and we make those, you know, make some of those adjustments. So there's a lot that goes into it, but again, we can certainly keep, keep that lens to look for issues that could be arising through, you know, through the mandates and open that communication.
Right, and I don't think they're all bad, I really don't. So I, my point, I guess, to go back to just look for efficiencies under bullet four, not just with the town, with internally.
Well, you could say working independently and collaboratively with the town to identify, I mean, we do that.
Yeah.
That's more, that's more, that's identifying what we do, so.
So independently and collaboratively.
Yep.
All right, that's good.
Okay.
Okay. Any other, any other comments or questions?
The date's wrong.
Oh, is it?
Oh, the two's have eighteen.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of important, thank you.
That's funny.
Thank you. Okay, so is everybody, and are there any other before I, okay, so I, just before I, before we vote, I just want to highlight, so we're going to change the date on the top of the front first page. We are going to, on page four, under item seven, Goal One, is it Goal One? Yeah, Goal.
Goal One.
Goal One, Objective Seven, C. We'll add to the end of that statement for, on the writing portion of the Alira. And then.
I think there's a typo in B.
In B?
It, you have, if you look at B in red, it says monitor on the number, it's just going to be monitor the number, so get rid of the word on.
Yep. Good. Okay, and then, and then if we go to Goal Five, Objective Four, we'll add, working independently and collaboratively, collaboratively with the town. And then in C, we'll add, in perens after energy efficiency, we'll add IE solar, natural gas, building management systems, et cetera. And I think that's everything. So if I could get a vote to approve the 2018, 2019 district goals and objectives as amended today? Hazel? Oh, it's everybody, sorry, we, I can everybody vote, sorry.
Yeah.
We've already, it's, oh, sorry, so let me.
We have to move to amend them, as you just said?
I, I just asked, and we don't need to do that.
Okay, great.
I just, so, sorry. You and I think the same way, Penny, I asked the question before I did it.
Too procedural.
Okay, so, all those in favor of the 2018, 2019, let's see, move to approve as a second read, the 2018, 2019, sorry, I'm looking at the wrong thing, sorry. As a second read, the 2018, 2019 district goals and objectives as amended is first moved and seconded by Mr. Hayes and Ms. Richardson, respectively, on June 18th, 2018. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
We'll get to work.
All right, thank you. And then moving on to the approval of the 2019 Board of Ed meeting schedule as a second read, are there any comments before we vote? Any questions, comments? It's your last time.
So I'm sorry, I wasn't here, so I had, I just happen to know I'm not going to be here January 22nd, but I don't think you need me, but if you.
Of course we do.
I, I was just looking at, there was only one meeting in, in February.
February.
Well, yeah, that, there still were in school on the 11th and the 25th.
Right, but then there's a meeting on March 4th. And the challenge with a meeting on the 25th is, since we're off the week before, and the 15th is a professional learning day, there's just, it's very difficult to prepare anything very meaningful. Since we're in the midst of the budget season at that point, we'll have lots of time to get it.
All right. Okay, that sounds good then, all right. Any other comments before we vote or questions? All right, seeing none. If I could get a motion to, or I'd like to move to approve as a second read, the 2019 meeting schedule of the Board of Education is first moved and seconded by Ms. Richardson and Mr. Cronin, respectively, on June 18th, 2018. All those in favor? It's unanimous, thank you.
Great, so we, we won't be filing these with the town until December, but we like to do these now so that we have the entire school year mapped out for people, for the 18, 19 school year. So we'll file it according to the town charter sometime in January. Okay?
Okay. Comments from the public? So I would just like to make one comment, and it's to Spencer Reeves back in the, you know, in the control booth back there. We're going to miss you, good luck in China with Duke. I mean, that's amazing, and it shows all the amazing work that the, you know, it's kind of timely that Lizette, you know, presented today, because now we have, we have a New Canaan High School graduate that's going to be studying in China. I mean, pretty exciting. So we wish you the best, Spencer, we're going to miss you, you're shoe, you have big shoes to fill, and, you know, Taylor's going to have a lot of work ahead of him, so, thank you. All right, any announcements and future business with Dr. Lettsi?
Sure, well, we are continuing our summer camps, and they're wrapping up very soon, our ESY as well. Our facilities projects are well underway, and all, all things are looking good and on target at this point. Our hiring of staff has not stopped, you know, we've been going through the summer and replacing folks and hiring folks as we need to. And we continue, of course, to look at our enrollment. We have another enrollment meeting tomorrow afternoon, tomorrow morning, actually, with our district elementary principals, middle school principal, in order to take a look at the numbers and see how we're trending and what's happening with that. It's been a little while since a meeting, so just to share with the board that our last day of school, which was June 25th, was the day with staff. Our students, of course, finished the Friday before. That day was very successful, went quite well with all of the staff. We began here as sort of, instead of a convocation, it was a commencement for the staff, and we ended our school year together with our teachers, our teaching assistants, everyone in the cafeteria. And then people went out to their respective buildings and had a productive day of professional learning, and started their summer that way. So it really worked out very well. And I want to thank everyone that was involved in pulling that together, including our food service, and, you know, everybody that just did a wonderful job. Our natural gas projects are moving along, you know, the disruption to the roads continues, but it's all for a noble cause, and the, as I understand it, the line at this point has been run up to South School. And so, and we're waiting for things to slow down a little bit more here at the high school and over at Saks for the boiler room to be complete, and then we'll be able to run those lines. So we're still optimistic that we'll get everything in place for those three buildings to the start of the year. And it looks like East may be a little bit later in the year, but we're hoping to get that in place prior to the actual heating season beginning. So there's lots going on across the district and buildings and this work, but luckily we have everyone, great people in all of our positions doing wonderful work on behalf of the, of the district. So we're in good, good shape.
Okay, thank you. All right, and if I could move for adjournment? Hazel, second, Katrina, all those in favor? It's unanimous. All right, enjoy the rest of your summer, we'll see you on August 20th.